Okay, good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Town and Planning Commission. The date is April 28th, 2025. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. The first item on the agenda is agenda changes. Do you have any agenda changes?
I don't have any unless anybody else has anything.
All right, hearing none. Let's go on to the second item of the agenda, which is review and approve previous minutes. I must confess, I did not read them, so let's take a minute. If only for me.
Thank you for joining, Jim.
Oh, you're quite welcome. I have. I just got back.
Yeah, if you weren't here, we would have had to cancel.
Well, you could have chatted a bit, you just couldn't make decisions.
Yeah, true. The minutes. Fine to me, thank you, Carol. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes, or do people need another minute?
I would, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that emotion.
You'll second that emotion? All right, all in favor of that emotion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have approved the previous minutes. The third item of the agenda is general public comment, fifteen minutes, fifteen minute max. Seeing the members of the public here.
And the chairs aren't talking.
Chairs are not talking tonight. We'll move on to item number four, town garage future bond vote. Do you want me to talk about this?
Well, yeah, and the reason I put that on there, Dan, was, you know, that you said, I know you're very active in trying to get things put together, and I just thought you might have an update at least, or want to talk about how you anticipate or see the PC helping, other than, other than the conversation we had about talking to neighbors and such.
Yeah.
I didn't know if anything else had cropped up.
Sure, I can give you a brief summary. So, as you heard, as you heard at the last meeting, Camilla, it seems like the select board so far wants to kind of keep a smaller team for the moment.
Oh, okay.
We were supposed to meet last week. We met once. We've met a couple times. We were supposed to meet last week, but we canceled. So, that would have been the meeting, I think, where we had invited more, you know, we would have decided on the, on the direction and moved forward. But let me take a step back and say, big picture. I think there's a lot of concern, you know, and I think there's town leadership has not done a very good job of putting much information out there. So I've been working to put together NFAQ, but we haven't finalized it. That we have to put together a one pager, and I, and I think our initial direction following a conversation with Joshua Schwartz was to get like kind of a smaller group of citizen activists who wanted to advocate for the garage. I, you know, I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure there's enough information. I got the sense, as I've talked to people, that there's really not enough, the public really doesn't have enough information yet. That people are are like really jazzed to say, yeah, I really want to fight for this. So, one idea that was suggested was kind of a more inclusive process. And, you know, we're just like, let's start having some public meetings and explaining to people why this is such a great idea. Which we really need to do.
Well, we have, so, great.
Yeah.
We have one at the town meeting. We had a, you could say we had a public meeting about the town garage.
Discussion.
Yeah, but I, I think, I mean, I wasn't there, I was sick that day, but from what I understand, well, you were there, but I, I don't think, I, I think in information why it's such a great idea probably needed to be presented in a more, I don't, that, that.
This is just anecdotal, but I just spoke to some family that lives in Warren, and I don't think that they were at town meeting, but the initial reaction that I got was, what's wrong with the current garage? And I didn't have a great answer, other than, it's really bad.
Yeah, I think a lot of people are in that situation.
Part of your Q and A.
Yeah, or some people have said, well, why do we even need a town garage? Like, what happens at a town garage? So I think, I mean, anyway, Macon, I feel like there's still, at least in my conversations with people, even if they were at town meeting, that we still haven't made a really good case as to why we need a new town garage and why the site on Von Brown Road or off of Von Brown Road is the right place to do it. It is, I can't keep interrupting you. I think that's great.
Yeah.
Like, I'm not making that case because I, A, don't know the case, and B, don't necessarily agree with. So like, there's like a royal we, I'm just trying to like cut to the chase, like you think this, and that's great, and your committee does. But like, just to the extent we're trying to like act as a planning commission and get input, like, do I think going to market with a $10 million bond vote for a garage is like gonna work? I, I don't think that's gonna work. And, and I think like, it's a narrowly viewed project. I'm glad that there's some pieces in place, it seems, after decades of angst that is related to me every time I ask questions about it. Right? I gave up on asking questions because I just get told of how, you know, but then finally, one day, like, changed. And that's great. And then we did the engineering stuff, right? And now there's conversations of it, but like, you know, one of the reactions I've gotten when I've talked to people about it is we're being asked to merge schools. Have we looked at merging garages with Wade's Field? Right? You know, I think that we need to look at this kind of amount of money and this kind of public engagement around it in the context of all the other things that are happening right now. And that, that to me is like, just what, how I'm hearing you, and I just wanted to throw that out because it feels like you're talking about, hey, we need to make sure we get the FAQ about why this is such a great idea, and like, I just, I'm not there. But like, maybe that's okay, I just wanted to say.
Well, I think when we make, I mean, the case hasn't been made.
Right.
Like, that, unfortunately, that's.
I just wish I missed that meeting, right?
No, the case hasn't been made. I mean, I, I, I mean, you know, frankly, I've only become involved in the garage myself in the last month, I would say. It's been really a select board project. And in talking to Jim and others, I do believe it's a great idea. And if only, if only from the standpoint of, we always need a town garage. And, you know, we can't function without a town garage as far as road maintenance. And even if we just rebuild on the current site, we're gonna have to build a temporary garage for a couple of years. Now that, no one's explained, you know, that's only in talking to people has it become, has that become clear to me? Like, you can't have a temporary garage and that working garage on the same plot of land. So I think we need to make the case that we need a garage.
Yeah.
And that it's, you know, one, we need a garage, and it really doesn't make, you know, and it doesn't make sense to build a temporary garage, which would go off of Von Brown Road for two years and then build an actual garage. The cost of that has to be more expensive than just doing.
Or equally anyways.
Or at least equally.
Well, and I think people's experience of what, what do we feel from a town garage is how are our roads, right? And I think our roads are generally pretty good and pretty well taken care of, so nobody in the public is feeling the deficiency of the current garage.
Exactly.
It's like, how do we get them to understand that there is one?
I don't know, give us three, you know, give them several weeks of vacation and let, let nothing happen. I mean, yeah, you're right.
Well, that, that would explain why we need a road crew, but I, so I think, I think the answer is.
When you say no one in the public, who is no, like, you've just literally had no one, no interest in this. I mean, I feel like that's a general, really big generalization. Like, a lot of people are concerned about the town garage.
Oh, well, may, maybe there are, I, you know, I'm, I'm probably overstating it. The conversations I've had with a handful of people, say, five people.
Or did you mean mine, what I was saying about people not being concerned?
Yeah.
You know, I think, yeah, I, I just talked to a family member that lives in Warren that sort of had no idea of there being any problem with the current garage. Well, what's wrong with the one we have? So it's definitely anecdotal, and maybe other people feel differently.
I think it's totally legitimate and a good reminder that at any point in the process, there will always be a person who's brand new to all of this. Right? So there should always be a way to like onboard them to like, well, what's the deal? And I think that's why some of this FAQ stuff can be really useful.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to just show people a picture of what the town garage really looks like and what equipment is being stored there and how it's not covered at all, and how we have open piles of salt and sand and I think just letting people know, because if you don't drive there, you don't see it. And it is really, it's not, it's it's not what I think is representative of the town of Warren. I think it should be a nice place to work and a sufficient place to have our maintenance equipment. I think just at the last meeting, I, I thought Ruth might have said it, but just having a sufficient place to store our equipment would add years to it, and you wouldn't really see an immediate savings, but I think it's an overtime savings of storing equipment. So, yeah, I think, I guess there's a lot to be done, but I'm surprised it hasn't already been put together as a fact sheet, or if just someone from the town garage could basically, like, in three minutes tell us. I think it's also a stormwater and a runoff issue, that the way we're storing things is not how it should be, and, and I can't say that we have been fined by the state, but I wouldn't be surprised if there was some compliance issues.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, how do we get the message out there to people that are maybe less engaged, but when they hear about a $10 million bond, they're all of a sudden gonna become engaged?
Well, for, I mean, the first thing I'd say is the $10 million bond, the $10 million bond number, I don't think we have a hard number yet.
Okay.
And the reason is the, and again, this will be, I mean, this is all information we have to publicize, and we have to get architects there, but the architects who they, who, who, who the town hired said the cheapest way to do the garage is hire a construction manager. The construction manager puts, rather than putting out the whole thing to bid and say, give me a price for a town garage, well, we'll build you one, you know. It's a golly construction, this will cost you $10 million, we'll give you a garage. The construction manager bids, bids out the pieces. So, I think that, I really, I don't, I've been told we don't have a hard number yet, but I do think that we need to give a range. We need to give an approximation. We haven't given an approximation yet. We haven't, you know, I don't think you've adequately publicized, you know, that we have X million dollars worth of equipment that don't fit in the current downtown garage. To Jenny's point, I guess the garage had an open house for over several days. No one went to visit it.
Right.
Apparently. I didn't, including me. You know, I don't know how, but I know it's bad in there. I don't know how bad it is. So I like Jenny's idea, have a public presentation, put up photographs. None of that's got, you know, none of that's happened yet, unfortunately, so I don't think people have the information to say.
But it's to be done as far as outreach.
I just, part of it is like, I want to be, part of me is like this, you know, there's this expression, disagree but commit, you know, like, if, if, if the town decides to do something, then, like, I think it's, it's worthwhile to try to help us be successful, like, explaining it to people. I think where I get tripped up is like that it's such a good idea. I, I never was asked or think it's a good idea to raise a $10 million bill to, to this, this project, like, as it's constructed. And so, like, we've talked about what goes in the property of the old garage when it's done, like, should we include the value of that land in the conversation about how we're paying for the new garage? You know, is that something that can be, you know, part of the conversation, right? Instead of having it so narrowly construed as to say, you don't understand how expensive this equipment is, we need a better shed for it, and it's $10 million, like, get on board.
Well, you stop saying $10 million, because I don't, unless you know, I don't know what the cost is.
Wasn't that the figure?
I mean, The Valley Reporter put out
Okay.
an article that said $800 a square foot. And talking to Jim, I, again, I haven't been, I have not met with the architect, but he was like, that's completely.
$1 million, whatever it is, right? Like, whatever the cost is, right? So, it's a significant cost, and I'm happy to leave, I'm, I've been on the other side of that many times, I hear you.
Yeah.
Nevertheless, it's to build a garage, and like, it's great that this is happening. When I first engaged with the project, it was less about how are we gonna pay for it? That was never part of the conversation. It was, where the hell is it gonna go? And then one day, the puzzle piece unlocked, and I was like, it's done, it's gonna happen, we have a path, isn't this great? Oh, by the way, we need to have a bond for $10 million, isn't this a great idea? Let's figure out how to sell it. And like, I'm just trying to say, like, I, I, we skipped a couple steps there.
I agree.
And, and so, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how much is for, like, how much is open for discussion versus how much is like, hey, Macon, I hear you, there might be, but like, we, the group has worked through these things, and like, we've engaged people and like, don't, like, it's more disruptive now to ask these questions, we need to be able to sell it versus, these are good questions at this point.
No, I think they're all good questions. We haven't, we, we haven't done a good job of answering.
Got it, okay.
That, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we're, we're in, I, I mean, I, I think the, the part that you that I think concerns people is a decision has been made, because I think to a large extent, a decision has been made. But the reasons have not been explained.
The decision is on the location where the new garage is going.
Yes, yes.
I, I, I'm so sorry my voice is like this. I'm looking back at my notes, so Bob Ackland gave a strong presentation at town meeting in 2023 about the need to move the town garage. That the current site is 2.5 acres. Based on some engineering, they need at least three acres. And the current issues of the town, of the lot are wetland, brook, and steep slope. And that, that it's, like, I, I see, I hear that you're upset that it, that it's 10 million, but if a town says it needs to do something, and you're upset at the amount, like, you're just gonna bang your head against the wall, like, I don't know what you're gonna say, like, what we, what we're saying as a, as a select board has been saying is this is a problem we need to solve.
Okay, let me, let me respond to that, because I was at that meeting too. You know, Bob gave a whole presentation, but it wasn't about how we're gonna raise money for it, it was about the need to find a location. At the time, they didn't have a place for it to go. And he, he said himself, when I asked him, like, if there's a better place for it to go, I would love to see that happen. Right? I, in that meeting. And so, in the next year, they found a place. That's great. But then we just, then we as a town have decided that we're gonna have a bond, or, or, and this is the part I like, I genuinely don't understand, and I'm, so I'm asking the question. You know, how are we gonna pay for a new garage? Well, it turns out that the old garage is on a really important piece of property since relocated for the village. And like, sounds like there's no plan for it right now, so what we could expect is just empty land if this thing's wildly successful in five years. But it also seems like maybe to help move the project along, you look at the value of that land, and I'm not saying sell it to the highest bidder, but I'm saying like bringing a developer of, of any type, but with, I would argue, very specific goals. But we can have that conversation, and have that be part of the value prop for the new garage. Right? $2 million from the real estate, I'm making that up, I don't know. But it just seems like we kind of went straight to, let's have a bond in a small group that will tell you what's up when, at the time's right, and like, how can you not see the logic in this? So, yeah, I get that when a town says they need a garage, you know, we do a garage, but I was told the block was location, not funding. Right? And so now we're at a point where, are we buying this land, are we leasing this? Like, no one has ever answered that question, so I'm, I'm just asking that same question. I'm not saying we shouldn't get a garage. And I hope that's clear.
So, Mason, I, I'm, I'm confused about how people don't know the location was a new thing. I mean, literally, for 17 years, we've known where we want to put this garage. And all, and
The Bob and Mill, right?
And, and the previous select boards have been hesitant because there was, there was an agreement between the landowner and, you know, getting an Act 250, but we've clearly seen, you know, legal opinion on what we can do with that piece of property as saying, we can do whatever we want with it. And while that does not make some neighbors happy, we've kind of always known that's where this garage is going. So I, I, I don't, I'm confused who, who didn't know that and felt like.
So I would, I would argue phrases like, we've kind of always known that's where it's going.
No, it's not kind of always known, it's been in the records, it's been in select board records.
You know, I, I talked to Bob about this two years ago, I went to the town meetings, I'm trying to share with you.
This is even before Bob.
That's great. I, I've moved, like, like, this is the sort of stuff you run into, where, like, I hear you, I'm trying to share, like, what my understanding of the perspective is. Right? And if you're.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand where that perspective came from.
I think you got, like, well, you, you're not letting me finish.
Well, I, I thought I did, I'm sorry.
Okay, let me, let me give it a shot here. So, you're confused about how people didn't understand the location because your understanding is that for 17 years, for a long time, we've, we, the town, has always known where it's really gonna go. Which I would argue is like a really accurate description of what I've picked up on and really poor way of like communicating about it consistently, but nevertheless, that is the location that's not the Bob and Mill, right? It's another location near this family. Is that right?
Well, so.
So, which we own, that, look, and that's fine. It seems like when Bob gave that presentation, that was not the location he was saying we were moving to. It had not been made clear that the eminent domain and the lawyers said it was fine to move ahead. And then in some point in the last year, it became clear, okay, what I'm saying is like, that's what changed. And now there's a path to build it at this location, but we never stopped to say how to fund it. And what I'm being presented is, we should go to a bond for, for a large amount to pay for the garage, and we skipped over, if it's going to this location, like, what's in the old location, could that be part of how it's funded to offset the, the cost? Or like, is this even part of the process? So, perhaps we're talking about two different things, but from my perspective, it does seem like the location issue changed in the last year when Devin and the select board got some kind of legal opinion that they could move forward. And that's what was related in the select, in the town meeting.
And that was the absolute.
That, that, that opinion has been around since, I, what, what's his name, Bert?
Well, it was discussed over the years.
No, no, Ruth, I have the two letters that where the lawyer actually ruled and gave his legal opinion on what we can do with that piece of property, and it's old.
Right, and, and that, I'm, I'm not saying that's not true, but I'm also want to make it very clear to people that even though we've always had that ability, based on what you've shared with me as far as documentation, that the select board in the last couple of years has made every effort as far as looking at other options besides that property.
Yeah.
Because, because they knew that there would be some serious, you know, pushback from the immediate neighbors because of the document that kind of made it such that they thought that they wouldn't have anything like that built there, okay? The Bob and Mill, family owned, didn't work, would have been ideal, even if we could have leased the land from them for some reason.
But that was never plausible, because it was always this one place for 17 years, and everyone should have known it, I guess. I mean, this is the thing, I don't understand.
Macon, Macon.
I don't understand that remark.
What I'm saying is like, I'm.
If that's a dig at what I said, I'm sorry.
There are legitimately multiple locations we talked about, and then you sit here and tell me, like, how could I possibly be confused that there's multiple locations? There's literally been multiple locations, like.
Maybe if you listen a second, I can try to explain, because it is a little confusing.
I go to all these meetings, and I do listen, and then I try to like show up, and everyone just tells me, like, oh, so many years, da-da-da.
Just, just a second.
That is not my intention at all, and if you're, if, if I've upset you in some way, I'm sorry. That was not my intention.
Hmm, okay.
So, as I understand it, as a new, really new, I have not been involved in the garage for, you know, this time last year, we were setting our priorities, and we took the garage off the table. Right? Because the garage wasn't moving.
Right.
Right? So.
Because of location.
Some, yes, because there was not, I think there was still the hope that another site would show up, that the select board could find another site. They've, they've, they've turned over, according to the select board, in the last 17 or 20 years, they've now turned over every stone, and they have, they have not found an alternative appropriate site or a landowner, like, take the Bob and Mill, for example, a landowner who wants the town garage on their land. Because the Bob and Mill, a great site, but the landowner said, no, we're not interested.
Okay.
So the select board has reached a position where we have no other alternative but off of Von Brown Road, and we have no other alternative but to rebuild a garage.
Right.
And I think the consensus, I hope when you hear the case, you'll agree, I certainly agree, feel free to disagree, that moving, rebuilding, rebuilding the garage on the, on its present site with, plus doing a temporary guys, but on its present site, right next to an elementary school, in the middle of the village, is really probably the worst place you could have a town.
No one's arguing that.
Right.
There was literally a select board meeting where there was engineers that said the site's not sufficient, it cannot be built there.
And it's, and it's in a.
Right, so who's arguing for it to be built next to an elementary school?
Or rebuilt next to an elementary.
Whatever.
Right, so therefore we want to move it. So, I mean, I think when all the facts get out there, I think most people would say it doesn't make sense to rebuild it in its current location. But we've done, we've done a pretty poor job of communicating why it needs to happen now, why this site, why an agreement, why the, why the select board has changed its opinion on an agreement. You know, with, and the short, the short answer is, because there's no other alternatives, and we can't kick the can down.
And what I'm saying is, I think you just described a decision that I, no surprises there for me. I think that makes sense. I'm just saying, that was a decision that was made in the last year since Bob's presentation to say, we've exhausted our options, so a location that at least for some, was considered non-viable, is now a path forward because of our sort of legal analysis. I, I get it, that's, that's a decision. And all I'm saying is, if that's the path forward, great. I think the garage needs to be done too. Like, I, I've heard it, I agree with it. But it's being done in isolation, and as a member of the public, and as someone who's just trying to understand the state's situation and the local situation, school board and others, I'm asking questions about the financing of it, because it seems to me like it's been approached with, now that we've found a location, let's figure out what needs to be there and get a budget to build a building. And what I'm pointing out is, where it is now is a valuable piece of real estate that could also be part of a deal that would offset the cost of capital we have to raise and bring in other stakeholders to the conversation, even if it's in an abstract, down-the-road idea, right? To say like, what is it unlock in that place next to the school, which although I don't want to build a, a garage that's really loud and full of gap, you know, I would like to develop the village. You know, I'd like to have a conversation about that, but if the garage is any indication, this town has really struggled to talk about how to develop itself. And all I'm saying is, as we're talking about how to develop the town garage, which now sees moving forward because the location issue was cleared up, can the financing involve the old location? Because there's value there. That would be more exciting to sell.
Right. I think, I think, like, my perspective on that, if you, if you let me weigh in.
No, I appreciate you just letting me hear my, I hope that made sense, I just wanted to get it out there, that's all I'm trying to say.
It does. And, and I think there's a, the prob, I mean, in an ideal world, like, the planning commission, as you know, for 20 years, has said that the current garage should be moved, this is that charrette. That actually wasn't the planning commission, it was the public who pointed out, get the town garage out of there and put in housing. That's a perfect place for more housing and a really bad place for a town garage. So, if you were to ask my opinion, and I think most people on the planning commission, they would say, yes, the current garage site, when that is gone, housing should go there. And I think you're saying the same thing.
Well, I would just point out, that is not something we should assume, and just, I'm just gonna say, it's okay. But I think that's a conversation that needs to happen about the highest best use of that public land. I think it should be housing, but that's an important conversation, but you're still going all the way.
So when, when we were talking about that site with Joshua, and I think Camilla floated the idea of selling the land to the highest bidder. And uh I think Camilla floated the idea of selling the land to the highest bidder. And my strong reaction was, let's not do that. Don't do that because if you sell it to the highest bidder. You will get, you're likely to get a single family residence when what really makes sense is multi is multi unit housing.
Right.
And then Kaziah and Joshua, not Kaziah, but um.
Joshua and Sam.
Joshua, Sam, and oh, my friend Darcy Jameson. Darcy and Kaziah is gonna come in in May, I hope. And tell us how, what, who, how, who can we partner with to start?
Yeah.
However, those two, those two things are on a somewhat different timetable, unfortunately.
Who's to say the highest bidder might not be a developer that wants to buy it and put a bunch of apartments on it?
And let me just say also, who's to say we have to take the highest bid? This is about our view of what is the highest best use. So if if we say. We're looking for bids to achieve this goal of this many affordable housing units. Then then it's a different proposition than saying, oh, we got a good chunk of real estate. How do we sell it all for the most cash? I I like that is absolutely not like it.
Well, what it cannot be that binary. Questions. One, what I heard from Darcy Jameson was affordable, building affordable housing is or workforce housing. Usually requires some capital from the town. Now, maybe because it's town owned land. And there's infrastructure already there, that counts as the town as the extra capital. But 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 it's unlikely, at at least what I took away. And I agree with you. And you're right, unless we ask, you never know. But the timetable, I just think the timetable of moving, first of all, we're trying to get this neighborhood, you know, the designation area. To unlock state funding. So we're the housing portion of it. Is frankly on a slower timetable than the than the garage bond. And there are people in town who. You know, may not share that vision. So we we not only have we not shared enough information on the town garage. But we really have only started the process of housing there. And and right now there's a garage there. So, you know.
Yeah. My view is like you you these conversations start getting real. When these things become plausible. And there never time. So I hear you on all of these pieces, but let me just say. This idea that we might need to like this to ask the public for capital to support our affordable housing project in the shadow of a. However, much bond for, let's just say more than a million dollars. I think it's worth considering that we're considering asking the public for.
I don't I don't I'm not sure we are. I think that might be a nonstarter. So.
So but my my point.
And the wastewater may be enough.
But my point is, if we're asking for the public for capital, why not ask for capital for a project that's integrated, right? And if you need to sequence them, if you need to say like it will unlock this future project, right? Okay, but at least at least show me that there's like a plan. And I get that we need to figure that out. What I'm saying is I have not, I do not have any idea how it's being created, what we're selling. I'm just saying as someone who's going to be asked to support it, like it's hard to support that. Given like we only get so many shots. How long has the leaders take? How does this town move? If we're gonna really focus on doing something, let's do it.
So another, do you want really if I and and tell me if I'm correct on this. You really want something that's kind of a a committed, be able to say that there's a commitment by the town. To have some sort of housing, potentially. Or I mean, just how how much detail do you want with what's done with that land with the move as far as it being connected?
I think, look, I think I I certainly would 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 argue for housing, but I would say that there's like two things. One is. We should consider the value of that property as we're considering the cost of the garage. And.
Okay.
And and that value can be actualized through development, right? So you, people would love. Affordable housing developers, not just like casino developers would love to like participate in a deal. For that property, whether that's a long term lease or how I don't, I don't really know. This is what Kaziah and others are really good at, but like. That's value we could use against the cost of the garage. And then the story is. We're we're unlocking this thing that will have this use. Now, should it be housing? I think so. But since it's owned by the public, I'm open to.
Right.
Something else.
I have some best uses.
I agree. And I think that it shows that we're being responsible with taxpayers' money to try and maximize some value out of that land and sort of incorporate that. And I have a question when we say affordable housing, you know, are we talking quote affordable housing like section eight or some kind of?
I think we have to use the word attainable.
Well, let me just be, let me say, I like I I'm open to all different kinds of funding, which are whatever's left next year. But I think like we get to choose. That's the whole point.
But if we're just talking about putting in multiple units there as opposed to a one family home. I don't see why a developer wouldn't want to pay some money for that land and then build ten units and then sell all ten of those units. I mean, there.
And they could have, they could have covenants to be perpetually affordable, right? There's other communities.
A certain percentage of the unit.
There's this, there's a lot of affordable housing policy.
Condo type units. They're gonna be more affordable than most of the other housing in Warren.
Absolutely.
By the nature of what they are.
Right. So there and there are a lot of programs around the state that have done a lot of this that are like. Meant to deploy capital to achieve this policy outcome because it's precisely not. Getting the most money in the short term for the property we could get. And I could understand how people would say. Look, I hear all of that. I actually think if you're up for selling the property, let's just sell the property. I know a good agent. And then we'll get that money and just put it against the garage.
Well, that was, I think, the select board's, the old select board's view.
Yeah, and I just.
The change was let's just sell it. And I think that's very short sighted.
Right. So my argument is there's so many other options, right?
The town should articulate what and I think that's I, you know, that's what was the intention of having. Kaziah come was help us articulate what what could go there and see, see if it's feasible. What the processes, what sources of state funding, if any, can we unlock? But I think that's unfortunately. That's on a somewhat slower timeline. I'm, you know, I I as far as I can see.
Yeah.
So so Dan, Dan, I just, can I, can I just say one thing?
Of course, please.
I I I still, I'm still enamored with. Um engaging with our 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 partners in business in the town. And talking about, we want affordable housing here and we want you and we want everybody to help. We want Lawson's to help. We want Sugar Bush to help. We want Ward Mechanical to help. We want, we want all those folks to help. And somehow. We'll get some big smart brains on it and figure out how we could, how we could pull the private sector in. And put affordable housing in there for workforce that, look, you get two units, you get three units. Yeah, we'll do these two units over here. And oh, by the way, you're on the hook to help us. Ward Mechanical, you're doing the plumbing, right? Um, figure out how to get, you know, the creativity that comes along with. You know, one of the world's premier building schools, yes tomorrow. Bring them into it and, you know, somehow. You know, make it a a grassroots effort from the town of Warren itself, not the town of Warren and the state of Vermont. And the federal government. And just look at that path and see, you know, is it, is it even possible? I I I mean, there's so much talent in this valley. It just feels to me that. If we, if we, if we, if if we really engaged correctly there. We could, we could get a little wind in our sails with Sugar Bush, with Lawson's and with those companies of saying, hey. Got a great spot for you to build on. We're giving you the land. We need help with the infrastructure. We're, we're looking to you to help this, you know, and is there some way? And fine, we don't do all thirty units at once. You know, we do four for, we do four for Sugar Bush and three for Lawson's and one for Belknap Plumbing. And just start and make it, you know, modular and use the yes tomorrow brains to help us, you know, how does that look? I don't know. I think it's something that the town could really almost get famous for. If we could figure out how to do this with um with, I'm gonna say with as little, you know, kind of um. State of Vermont help as possible. And then we we'd have freedom of choice on how on how we wanted to do it, right? You know, I I don't have to measure incomes and things like this. I can just give this young family a job. Or I can build four dorm rooms for people working at Sugar Bush. Um, I I don't know. And then the last thing.
Cool idea, Jim. I think that's a really cool idea. And I think that's something else we have to run down. And I think.
I I agree.
Yeah, Kaziah comes in, we should talk to her about that. Are there other models? How's that work?
I I just.
Yeah, please, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, I know that. I just want to make sure that we aren't just, you know, let's broaden our scope on thinking about. The help we can get and 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 uh really try to turn the crank. I mean, the people in the valley that are complaining, and I shouldn't put it that way. Are, you know, most concerned about affordable housing are businesses that can't afford to move their people up here to work. Okay. Come help us, right? I mean, let let's engage however we can help. And then I still think as far as funding goes. I mean, uh uh we ought to be taking advantage of these local option taxes. If if we, if if we really want to do this. We ought to be getting right behind that and saying, okay, it's not just a bond. We're putting this down. And oh, by the way, we're not just gonna tax short term rentals. We're gonna go after long term rentals as well. Because that's a whole piece of a market, you know, that. There is potential revenue out there that we could, that, you know, we could use. So we we gotta think about, okay, we're gonna pay for it. Maybe we should stop saying bond and we should start saying local options tax, bond. Grants and whatever, and include all the funding sources and not just, you know. Overwhelm the public with this giant eight million dollar bill.
Oh, Jim, I love everything you said there, man. I'm I'm so with you on that. I it's like. I will just tell you like it is, there are lots, so many moving pieces there. But I have one question on this. And it's it's tr- a true question is like. Because you you're kind of conflating two things that I'm also trying to join. And I wanted to make sure that's intentional on your side. Which is this idea of like bringing that spirit, that ethic, you know, that you described to both what's in the currently, like what could be. Uh replacing the current garage location, right, with housing and doing business partnerships and things like that. But then there's also, of course, the garage itself, which is the reason we're raising money. And I I'm just wondering. If you see that same approach applying to the garage, which is sort of the original cost center, or or did you see that's kind of?
Well, uh you know, I never looked at the garage in that manner. So.
Okay.
Maybe we should, but I had ne- I never, I never looked into that that space. I kind of figured that is. Industrial design one on one. Maybe it's not. Maybe there's a better way to do that as well.
Well, even like funding of local options tax or looking to business to contribute.
Well, absolutely. As far as funding, as far as funding goes, we're gonna have to get behind um. Of all available resources, right? Because we know others are going away. So we're gonna have to get.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to get our heads wrapped around whether or not we we want to do that.
I mean, I'm I am in favor of a local options tax. I think the problem again is that's a very time consuming. I mean, you you have to get, I mean, it it takes time. It's a, I think it's a multi year. It's at least a one year. The legislature has to approve it. We have to have a campaign to to get voters to persuade. Voters who've already voted against the local options tax proposed by the MRVPD, why it really makes sense. I I believe we'll get there eventually. But I think the garage, the the sense on the garage is it's much more urgent. That we have really kicked the, we have kicked the can down the road for twenty years. And now it's, we just can't wait on the garage anymore.
But what if we go to a bond and the vote is no?
Yeah.
Which I think we're really set up to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, that's why I won't, I hear you on the garage, but like also it was urgent two years ago. I mean, I I hear you. It's one of those things. But like, that's why we need to succeed. And I think it like. I'm just saying, like, it it is not, it does not seem a attract. Like it 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 seems much stronger when it's connected with a vision for what goes.
We've got to find the best way to present that with trying to also get the bond vote passed.
Yeah, maybe we have some tangible money coming out of the current site that we can say we're putting towards what we're asking for for the new one.
Well, we have some value coming out of that. I don't know if we have any actual cash coming out of it, but we certainly have. You know, the value of the property itself.
Right. I guess we can't actually sell it until the new one.
So can anybody hazard a guess, uh, you know, and I don't care if it's within twenty five percent. What is that piece of property worth? Plus or minus twenty five percent.
From what I've heard, Jim, that's unknown. I mean, we've got a, you've got to get the garage. You know, there's, there's a chicken and egg problem. Got to get the garage off of there. You've got to test it. I mean. You gotta get an architect on there who's got to look around and say, we're, you know, what.
We need a new brownfield test because the last one we had was two thousand.
Dan's never heard of Zest.
I'm just trying to get it by head. It is, would someone buy it for a million dollars?
Oh, no, no, no.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
More.
What? It's just two and a half acres.
That's what I'm singing, saying so at the very most.
With constraints, as Jenny has pointed out, you know, because there are so.
Septic?
Uh, well, there's.
At the most, it's worth four hundred thousand dollars?
What? No, it's that, I mean, that may be your viewpoint. I think it's worth much more. I mean, I would point out there has been like some work the town's done that points out there's like. Uh, potential for eight units there or more. And so like, maybe those are wrong. I'm just saying they exist. And so before we all jump to like, it's only worth. Four hundred thousand dollars or it's worth five million. Let's just say like, we need to like get value for it, right? Like.
Yeah, I I'm just.
That's all I'm saying.
I think I really, I, you know, I think it's, this is.
There is one though down.
I I really, I don't think there's an appetite on the select board who's already really, you know, like, how do we get this bond passed? You know, I think on the land, like it or not, the message is gonna be, we have a number of options we're exploring at the moment. But, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a definite plan yet. You know, I think that's where we're gonna end up.
I think, I think we've got something here by the fact that they can ask the question that if, if we want to attach the fact. Yes, we're moving the town garage. But we're also gonna be following up with how to use the old town garage property. And we know that the value of that land is X. And, but you know, something just to.
We know the value of that land.
You did it appraised.
But like you said, there's brownfields.
Okay, I get, maybe there's nuclear waste and we can never build anything. But but here's the thing, like, that that's more than just the monetary value is the public owns it. So we can say, because there are a lot of people who would love to develop it for, uh, you know. Long term rental housing for workforce. They're priced out of the market in Warren. Because private landowners sell to the highest bidder because they want, and and that's how it works. But we're not a private landowner. So rather than look at like what's its like market value, let's also step back and say. When would we ever have the opportunity to make a some kind of like instantiation of affordable housing in the middle of the village? That is being eaten up by Airbnb everywhere else.
I agree.
So there's some, there's value there that has is more than than money is what I'm saying. And so like in the conversation about this, like, let's see it as like this. Like, yeah, we could sell the library. I bet we could get a lot of, you know, it's like, of course not. These are like central pieces of the village. That will impact its character one way or the other. The old garage is part of its character. Having that gone will impact the character. What goes there next? If it's walkable units of people who are walking into the village of young families who work in small businesses, like. That's how we sell a bond.
Yeah, here's what I'm worried about there, Makin, is I agree with everything you just said. However, I I just feel that that's not. That's not how most of the people voting on the bond are really gonna feel. They're gonna feel. How much money is a property worth? What are we gonna do with it? And they want a real number there. And that's gonna, that's gonna persuade their bond vote. Versus saying, hey, look, this is the future, folks. You want a nice village in a hundred years or in a fifty years or twenty five years? We got, we gotta think of it, you know, as we own it, let's do something with it. I'm worried. That that's not how a bond voter will be thinking about it. It, that's my concern.
Yeah, no, I I I appreciate it. And I I haven't been in here for the past bond vote, so you know. I I mean, the other reality is building, uh, just, you know, building a new garage is, I think, a multi year project. I think it's a couple of year.
I've heard you, that can be done in a year and a half if the timing's right as far as.
Right. So let's say a year and a half, a year and a half to two years. Let's say it's a year and a half to two years. Okay. So we don't, we have, you know, we have a little bit of time to figure this out. I and I don't think we're going to have an answer. On housing. on housing at that garage site in the next couple of months.
Find some way to connect it.
We need the path forward and and I think, I my my own opinion is the planning commission's voice in the process is, should be, let's not sell that land to the highest bidder right away. Let's explore our options. It's a great place for housing. If we can figure out a way to do it that doesn't, you know, that doesn't hit people's pocketbooks excessively.
And I I think we all more or less agree with that. I know I do. But I think it's, I still want to get back to the thing that I'm hearing the loudest from Macon, and that is making sure that what our vision is, even though it's it's not set in stone by any stretch of the imagination, that that's part of why you want to get the garage moved. Because it's going to be a win-win. Right now, that property over there is is vacant except for storage that the town garage uses. And if we can get the town garage moved over there and get some sort of, whether it be housing or something that the community has some overwhelming desire for, that's a win-win.
Totally. And I'm not going to miss this opportunity, at least to get it attached.
To find the best way to to put that out there in a in a simplified way.
Well, I think, well, then we make, we'll make the argument to Camilla and Devon. Again, I think the the first argument to the select board is please don't sell that piece of property to the highest bidder right now. And then I think their view, from what I've heard, is they're concerned, having heard from people who are thinking from their pocketbooks, is you're going to hit us on a bond on the town garage, and then you're going to hit us on a bond on housing that, and and we don't want that. We don't want to double whammy. And we and we, they they get that. And so so persuade the select board.
Well, first of all, there's like all these constituencies you're talking about. What's the bond on housing that 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 is like you're talking about here?
Well, it's an assumption. That's an assumption that people will easily make, I think.
Like, you've got a plan to put housing there, and you're going, and we're going to end up holding the bag for it.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't, I don't think the select board is thinking that way. I think the select board is thinking, we have land, we have a wastewater system. So we have, so and and for the right developer, I mean, if if they're thinking this way, I actually think they're so fo- they're focused on the garage. And and but down the road, we want them to focus on housing, and we have things we can give a developer that might make it attractive. But but again, I think housing, I it's like step two. We need, we need to be thinking about it, but they're thinking about getting a bond passed.
Jenny, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think, one project at a time. We're talking about volunteer select board, and I I think it's great that you want to make this like a massive marketing plan that like appeals to everyone. But when I think about a bond, I think about what needs to be done, tell me why it needs to be done, and tell me that your budget is realistic and isn't like superfluous or unnecessarily large. Um, I think it's asking a hell of a lot for the select board to come up with some like development plan on the back end of moving the town garage. And other than that, I don't, I don't know why we're talking about this, because I'm not really sure how we can impact it, other than if we're talking about it to like, put some presentation together for the select board.
I um, I tend to agree. I think this like board is full up on the town garage as is.
But I think that there may be people who may ask about what's going to happen on that space, and I think we need to.
Yeah, I mean, Jenny, like, like, why are we talking about it? We're talking about it because we started this conversation with like, hey, we're going to need to sell this bond vote. It's a good idea. And I tried to say like, I don't quite understand the idea. And like, I also don't necessarily think it's a good one as it's constructed. Now, by the way, you clearly disagree, and that's cool, but like, I'm trying to explain why I was talking about it. In other conversations, there's been, oh, we're going to have a small group. People are going to get together to really sell the bond vote, or there's people going to people's houses sort of, oh, can we get you on the outreach committee? And like, at the same time, there's like a small group that has to meet secretly until it's time for a thing. And like, I'm pointing out, to the extent like I'm being asked to like help, it's difficult, and I also have ideas. That's why we're talking about it, because that's what I thought these meetings were for. So if there's, we can close the agenda item. I don't mean to prolong it, um, but I also uh am surprised I need to justify it.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, the last one that I'd make it is, you know, we we need to be getting getting the process out to more people. I mean, I I all, that's all I can say is, I I I think you're right, that the more people need to be included, and it hasn't been an inclusive enough process. And until it becomes, you know, a more informative, inclusive process, I expect it will be very hard to move forward. But, you know, I, you know, I don't know what to say. I mean, we just had town meeting. Where are we? We're in April. We had town meeting in March. We have a select board that is down to three people. You know, they're they're overwhelmed, and we we try to help them as a planning commission the best we can in the way they tell us they want us to help them. And if they choose to keep it as a smaller group for now, that, I mean, that, I mean, I, you know, that that was their choice, Macon. I, you know, that was, we heard that loud and clear. That was their choice. For now, they wanted to keep it in a small group.
And that's, hey, that's cool. And like, but maybe one day I'll read about a bond vote that's happening. I mean, that's, that's the way it goes. That's, I'm just a person on a volunteer board. I'm just saying that to these, we're trying to, like, ideas and like help of, like, how to sell it. My ideas, which clearly aren't the same as others on the committee, that's cool, but like, we're having this conversation just to like, understand if now's even the time to do it. And I I hear you on the process. Sounds like it's it's not necessarily, and that's, that's cool. Let's wait and see. You know, where it goes. And this has been really helpful for me personally, just to understand a lot of it, and I really appreciate the patience there. But um, I also think a narrow bond vote for a building, for a garage, that is necessary. Um, it's not what we have to do right now, and it's not the best path to get public support or my support. But that's where we are.
Thank you. Um, all right, let's close down the town garage future bond vote. Um, where are we, Tom Moss?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. Let's see, we have review current priorities and update priorities for twenty twenty-five, but I think we're missing a lot of the planning commission.
We are, and 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 I didn't necessarily expect a whole lot of conversation necessarily, depending on the hour and such on this.
I have a comment on this. I sort of missed um the opportunity the first time we talked about it, and I don't have anything at all specific or concrete, but just sort of ideas. Um, I think sort of one general plan is just to think of ways to increase the number of full-time residents in Warren, um, and to make this sort of a year-round place to live. Like, I believe that the statistic is that we're at, I think, sixteen percent of the homes in Warren are
That's right.
full-time residents. And so just sort of as far as ways to make that happen, I know a lot of it is sort of, you know, um, abstract and beyond what we can do. And I know housing is a big one, and we talk about that a lot. Um, but another thought I have is like community resources, you know, how to make this a town where it's feasible for people to live year-round, both people with young kids, but also seniors. Um, and something that I thought about was healthcare and what's going on with the Waitsfield Health Center. And is there anything that we could do in Warren to have some form of healthcare? And again, I know this is like very abstract for us, just as the little planning commission that we are, but um, you know, I thought about, there's that vacant building on the corner of Brook Road and Warren Village, you know, that I'm talking, there used to be a hair salon. And I have this vision of like, what if there was like a nurse practitioner in there where you could go and get some medical care and a pharmacy? I know that's totally kind of wild and hard to accomplish, but just an idea, kind of, we got to start somewhere. Um, and I don't know that that's really like a town thing. You know, this wouldn't be a town-owned office, but maybe it's something that we could.
A nurse practitioner there and, you know, maybe one other health professional would be ideal.
Yeah.
The pharmacy?
Yeah, maybe that's pushing it, but even just to get an NP in there that people could go see. Um, and maybe it could be paired with something at some other kind of healthcare.
There is an integrative uh medical person that lives, has a place out of her home down here at one hundred. So we do have a medical person in Warren, sorts.
That's interesting. So, I mean, I do think that's a pretty cool idea. We could put that on.
And maybe this is like twenty twenty-six PC.
Right. Well, this, the reason I put the copies of your objectives and strategies is to kind of use this as a guideline as to what we have and what we need to either improve, amend, um, add, maybe not subtract. And so this is that section of the town plan that I just thought you could use to make notes on instead of doing it on your regular.
Community facilities and services, that's on there.
Yeah, so this is something I just wanted you to have, just this one section, to be able to. So.
This is helpful, but like.
Because we're going to have to be looking at this anyways. And if we use this along with the priorities, like the suggestions you just had and the other ones, and we'll go back to that, those minutes, I forgot about those, where we had kind of a an updated list.
Yeah, we did, we did in the list, like housing, town garage, visiting, short-term rentals.
And then we'll also, um, hopefully we'll get the grant that Dan and I and several others managed to submit for a municipal planning grant, um, and Central Block will be our professional to help us get through this. They will make sure that we get, um, that we comply with all the statutes. Um, but that won't really come around until after November.
Okay. Can I say something about the town plan?
Please.
Yeah. So I I think that your points that you laid out are great. And the one of the priorities that I saw on the list is is the town plan. And I think that's, even though it's technically not up, I guess, until twenty twenty-seven. You know, when you look at the current language, and I thank you for printing it out, you know, it's all about retaining and reclaiming and preserving and protecting. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a condo association. It's a, it's a, it's a conservation, you know, fairly conservative approach. And I think that's an opportunity to be more intentional about, like, do we want to develop? Do we want to grow? Um, and most people, um, I think who participated in a lot of the public engagements um, would probably be against that. And I think a lot of people carry an assumption that the community does. I think there's a lot of people who've moved to this community who aren't connected with the civic piece of the planning commission and the select board for time, for whatever, uh, who'd be surprised at sort of this posture. The second thing is like, it really doesn't um address what happened with the pandemic, what's happening with like work and sort of how things are happening with um the housing prices. I mean, it was, it's it's articulated there that housing's a challenge, but it's nowhere, you know, it it's nowhere near as bad as it is now. Uh, and then the final thing is there's really like an economic vision that's fairly, you know, sugar bush and tourism oriented around, you know, skiing. And I feel like if that's the case, we should recommit ourselves to it. But it seems like perhaps like this is where we could have a conversation about small businesses or how we attract things other than Airbnbs to Warren. So anyway, I I just think that the the town plan could be something that starts sooner than twenty twenty-seven, and it's kind of how to make those things real.
But we have to, we have to work out for the next twenty, because it's two years from this month that it expires. And um, so that's why we're starting now, at least to start thinking about it, start looking at it, start thinking about how you may want to, as I said.
Well, it's really a process. Like, I mean, I have a lot of feelings about it, but it's more like, how do we, how do we want to run a process to create it, right? This is, I I would say of the, of the things the planning commission does, drafting the town plan seems like a fairly reasonable task. Um, and so like, is that one member of the planning commission being the editor who like takes on being the, having the pen for it? Um, have we looked at how other communities have done town plans? Like, is there precedent to keep in mind? But but ultimately, it's a big opportunity, and I don't want just like.
Historically, we've hired a consultant who helps us, at least the last go-around. We hired a consultant who would kind of helped us to organize the process and put up decision points
Yeah.
for us. Um, and then we had our own internal con, you know, the consultant wouldn't be at every meeting. Um, there'd be things we would have to hash out as a planning commission and then share our decisions or our, you know, uh, our input with the consultant, and they would help us put that into the town plan.
And there's certain things that, there are certain things that have to align with the state as well. And it's not just our own.
And CBRPC.
Yeah, and a lot of that state stuff. But um, one good thing about this one that was done is the fact that it pretty much eliminated what was a lot of historical stuff. That really wasn't necess- I mean, some of our older town plans had a lot of historical stuff, which was great and nice, but it's not really what you really want cluttering up the town plan, because you really want it to be more forward-thinking and not backward-thinking.
So one of the items is community facilities, facilities and services. So maybe we just look at that as being something we want to prioritize.
And maybe expand it, be more specific with it, you know, because some strategies, you know, and.
That's a great idea. I mean, I, I mean, I think I've mentioned this before, but I feel like um, we rely on private, you know, private individuals or private companies for so much, swimming pools, tennis courts, cross-country skiing, you know, but you know, mountain biking, you know, and 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 the town itself owns very comparative, I mean, comparatively little of it, or has done very little. You know, we don't have a town swimming pool. We don't have a a town uh community center for seniors and for younger children. I mean, there's all sorts of things that may go along with your vision of creating, of course, it's money. I mean, that's the big, that's the big issue, but um.
There's also a library and building off of that, you know, and I know that Amanda, the library does a lot of programming during the day. And there's been talk about building that into pavilions out there, because you know, in terms, I I don't quite know what that is, means, like, is it going to be real? But like.
This coming weekend, not this weekend, but a week from this weekend, there, it's going to be like raising a um.
They're building a show out there? So like, there's infrastructure happening for this kind of thing that like, I feel like you just have to, yeah, I I mean, I love it.
There's a movement up at the four corners up here where they want to do something, community, a piece of property. They are looking at putting together a nonprofit on that corner of Brook, uh, Warren.
The four corners.
East, East Warren Road, yeah, the four corners. And there's that property that was originally owned by Robert Elliott that was sold to somebody who was going to build on it, and they decided not to. And um, and actually, Adam was, I think Adam is somewhat involved in that. Um, but maybe not, but I think he's aware of it. No.
It's an interesting that how they're.
Maybe some solar, but.
Long-term or full-time residents. Uh, I'm not sure it's ever something we've thought of as a goal, but I think it's a really interesting one, and we probably should think of it as a goal.
Yeah.
And then think of what what could we, we've had some ideas, and maybe when we have um everyone around the table, we can start.
Well, and I think it didn't used to be as much of a problem as it is now. You know, I think twenty years ago, there probably were a lot more full-time residents than there are now. And it's something that's decreasing. Um, and it just eats away at the local community.
I think Bob Backman used to say it was a quarter, a quarter of the people were.
Yeah, now it's down to sixteen percent.
Yeah, so it's, that's a pretty big drop.
There are a couple of people here in the um village who have complained about the fact they don't have the neighborhood anymore, because either the buildings are empty or, you know, there's, you know, short-term rentals every other weekend or something, you know, kind of thing.
Yeah, and I thought of this even when like, you know, we had two select board seats and had some trouble finding candidates. And I'm thinking, well, because nobody lives here. It's not like a lack of that nobody wants to volunteer. It's just that there's not a lot of people that live here to be potential candidates. And so it's things like that that start to fall apart, you know, then you don't have a select board or a planning commission. I mean, we're not there, but if we continue this trend, that's where we're going.
Well, how do we, like, I found it's hard. I'm with you, definitely with you. And in addition to that, it's also like having perspectives of different members of the community, because right now, I think we have a lot, yeah. We have a lot of blind spots, I guess. Like, how do we make it more accessible? This is ongoing thing, you know, and it's, you're, I really appreciate what you're doing with the front. I really appreciate what you're doing with the Frontwood Forum and all of these sort of like communicating stuff. But it's also almost like when we have our meetings and how we do this, like, how do we, just as someone who's been in the community, like, how do we, is there a network or places where people are gathering or just like things we need to tap into?
I mean, there used to be, there used to be a group of people that had breakfast at the Warren store, like, almost every day. Um, but I don't think that happens anymore. And so like, right now, I don't know currently what those, I think that we need to rebuild it.
Yeah.
And that's kind of where we are. Um, and we talked about doing like the, the wind down or our version of roundup. Um, I think that, you know, that's a good opportunity or, you know, doing more out of the library, but I don't know that it really exists right now, like.
Where we get conversations are the post office here, depending on timing, the transfer station, and the Hurons occasionally shows. That's where I, or Bisbee's, that's where you run into people and you end up having conversations with people.
Yeah.
But there, you're right, the, the kind of thing where there's like a coffee shop that people tend to go to.
Go ahead, Jim.
And it was a super interesting in that the people from the sixties and seventies moved here, had children, and many of their children stayed. And then in the eighties and the nineties, a few of the children stayed. And Dan, I think you and I can both testify, none of our children are staying.
Yeah.
So i- if you look at, you know, I, I think we gotta start thinking about, boy, what, how do we capture that audience, right? They're already here. They already know how great this place is. And why aren't they staying?
They can't afford it.
Yep.
Literally can't afford it. It's not like they're being like, I don't, I want to be in the big city and, no, they just can't afford to live here.
Even families that have property that could carve out a couple acres for their kids, even once they got there and they built something on it, they, they can't afford.
Well, I can kind of speak to that, because I was part of the generation that grew up here where, you know, most of the people that I grew up with left. And I think for us growing up here, there was this feeling like there's nothing here.
Yeah, yeah.
Just a place where there was nothing here, and you'd have to, you had to get out and see the world, and that you had to go somewhere else to be in a real place. Like, that was kind of my, how my peers looked at it, and I, you know, I, I went other places and I felt like that there was nobody, nowhere else that was just as good and as special as the valley, and I just felt like I had to come back, but I think that that was kind of the, kind of unique. I think most people and that, I don't know, if I could sum up the feeling, it was like, there's nothing here. And I think that's kind of where I'm getting this idea of if we could build up like community events and resources, so you feel like, you know, you live in a real town that's bustling and has things going on, then that would help, you know, people to want to stay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, let's have that, I think we should, that deserves a place on our priority list, and I think when we have the folder group that's talking about our priorities, I mean, one of the things, we, we're, we're due to make a presentation to the select board about our priorities, when, when, do you remember when? It's not for a little while.
We thought, we thought it was at the last meeting, but they're so tied up in the garage and stuff, so I'll check with Rebecca and find.
I thought it was sometime in May, but I'd love for us to.
Was it in May? Okay, because.
I'd love for us.
I thought it was.
June, maybe?
No, I thought it was April, but I'll, I'll check with her and find out whether it's May or June.
Yeah, because we should have time to put together a presentation. I, I think we need to discuss. It should not be a presentation to the select board until we've had a chance to discuss it as a group and talk about what we'd want to present to them. So that means I'm gonna skip over five, and then we'll go to six newer other business short-term rental status. Have you heard anything on, from the select board on what's going on with that? The ordinance itself, did they ever hear?
So what was the vote that, what were they talking about on Friday? Does anybody know?
Who on Friday?
The select board warned a special meeting and had a.
That was.
It said short-term rentals in there.
No, that's not, it was, there was a meeting, but it was not necess, I mean, it may have been mentioned during that meeting. I can't remember as an aftereffect, but it was there.
I thought it was on the agenda. What am I missing?
Oh, yes, it was to some degree. And what happened is, now I remember. Luke had given it to
V L C T.
V L C T. And they, and when they received it back in February, March, whenever, I guess it was February, January, January, February, they said, we won't have a cha, time, a chance to look at it until really March after town meeting day. And so we assumed that sometime last month, they started looking at it. And when we finally checked in this month to find out what the status was, it seems that there was a, an email that went to Luke. I don't know if it was copied to anybody else, but saying that this would take roughly a ten-hour roughly review. And the L C T does chart for legal review of that type. And they're getting a five-page thing. Um, and it was a hundred dollars um, an hour. And they only found that out like a week ago. And that's when they ended up having that special meeting, when Rebecca called to find out what was going on.
To approve a thousand dollars, though?
Yeah, it was to, it was to approve. Yeah, so that's what they did. They just, they said, you know, we'll, we'll give you a thou, you know, we'll commit to a thousand dollars. But if it's for any reason goes further than that, let us know before you do so.
Okay, so the, so short-term rental legal review vote was just voting about whether or not to hire lawyers?
Well, it was to pay.
Or pay the L C T.
Paying the L C T's attorneys.
Okay.
That's what it was. Thank you for giving me the clues. That's, it finally brought it all.
Yeah, that, I, I saw that and I said, oh, boy, they're voting on it. And then.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they, they haven't even had the legal review?
No, because it appears as if Luke did not get back to them and tell them, he must have not, you know, you know our, how our emails get, and he was at one foot out the door anyways.
Yeah, no, but the, the hard part is, you know, we signed a contract with Granicus, we're paying Granicus, yet without an ordinance, we're not collecting any revenue. Um, and that's, it's a, I, I, that's, that's a bad book.
And it's frustrating, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, how's it, how's, how's it supposed to pay for itself and more if you never get an ordinance in place? It doesn't.
So, so Dan, did we need an ordinance to do a registry?
Yes.
We needed a ordinance to collect money. Is that?
To, to collect money and force people to register, yes. Or require, require people to register.
One of us needs to go to a select board meeting and explain that.
I think they know.
Oh, they know.
I, I think Camilla knows that, I'm sure.
Yes.
Oh, no, they know that. They know that it's helping so. But they thought things were moving along.
What's the latest on their, like, new members? Didn't they get?
Well, they, they, um, there were two or three that they interviewed. They, I think there's one that they very much might like to have. But they said, they had a couple other people who at the last minute said, you know, I'm interested, but I can't come to this particular meeting. So there's a couple other people that they're gonna talk to, so that they can pick the two people that they'd like to appoint. And then they will be basically temporary until next town meeting day, where they'll have to be actually voted in.
I think they should have a special election, but that's my opinion.
Well, I, you know.
I think.
Have you suggest, have you suggest?
Given the, given the town garage up in front of us, given, you know, what we're gonna do about the property and the town garage and regulations, it'd be good to have the public weigh in.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Don't they have to? Is that, what else?
Well, no, it's, it's like when you have a vacancy, you can fill it in temporarily.
Okay.
Is what it is, and then they, then they have to get the petition and get voted on at the next town meeting.
Okay.
That's how it works. So this is now almost May. So hopefully in the next six weeks, ballpark, give or take, they will have talked to these other two people, but I've heard that I guess they've also at the last minute expressed an interest, and they said, yes, we'll sit down and talk to you. And they'll make a decision, and it'll be an appointment for the balance of this year up to town meeting of March of next year. And then, yes, they will have to be voted in. So it's not like they're filling, fulfilling somebody else's term where they can be here for two years or three years on an appointment. They would still have to be.
I'm sort of returning to one of your points, Michelle. I do wonder, I think the burden on the select board, I mean, it's really heavy on the planning commission already when you think about things like land use development regs and even the town plan. It's hard enough to get people, I mean, I think of all the attrition we had going over the land use development regs. I, and I think of the select board, I just think it's, I, the, the state required, the requirements, the lack of support in terms of financial support um, for small towns to, you know, and I just think it's like increasingly complicated problems. Not enough money or support from the state, and I think it's the burnout. I just feel like, personally, I feel like the burnout is is a factor, and I'm sure for the select board, it's.
As far as people not wanting to serve.
Yeah, I think it's tough as hell. You know, like the town garage, like, who, who wants to, you know, think of them, they're trying to sell a complicated project they believe deeply is in the best interest of the town. And then you have people going, ah, you broke your promise, or, oh, it's too expensive, or, you know, it's just like, you know, your average person is just like, oh, you know, who needs it? Plus, they've got to work with, plus, they've got to work with the architects, you know, in their, their volunteers, and they've got to come up with like, what is the best plan? Who do we hire as an architect? Who do we hire as a project manager? Who do we, you know, how do we, then the housing, then the, then the bond, then the, it's all, it's a hell of a lot for, you know, practically volunteers, you know, it's crazy. So, you know, that would, that'll be, and another question in community building is how to get people who want us, you know, who are willing to serve, when the load is pretty darn heavy.
Start by just getting more people.
Yeah.
And then hopefully some of them will want to serve.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I, I, as I said, there was two, I thought there was three that they did talk to, and I know there was one in particular that they, they liked, but that they're gonna see who else.
Right, and they're trying to interview them and decide on them at the same time.
Exactly.
At the same time, they're juggling this project, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's see, I don't really have any M R V P D updates. I mean, I think, you know, Wakesfield is, I think you read in the paper today, Wakesfield prob, Wakesfield's project is moving, moving along somehow despite, I mean, it wasn't the paper today, but last week where they got another million in funding.
Oh, that was for the wastewater system.
Yeah, for, for Wakesfield's wastewater. I mean, the good, I mean, the good, the good news from Wakesfield is that when they've done community engagement projects, people are like, we want maximum build out. You know, they haven't said, you know, in that Ivorsville area, they want to have like, put in as much commercial, as much housing as you can. That's the vision. That runs into wetland questions as to whether we'll ever be able to, whether A N R will be on board with a, a maximum build out kind of model, but at least the public is interested.
Did I see you all heard that time when they showed the, the different phases of, of?
Oh, we did that at the M R V P D. I did not go, I did not go to the Wakesfield meeting, but we had the same presentation at the M R V P D.
Oh, okay, yeah, that should, because it showed, this is how much, and this is a little more, and this is a little more, okay.
People voted pretty humanously for the maximum build out model, which was all down Slow Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then almost all the way to Lawson's.
Yeah.
But you do have wetlands in there, but I think there is a way that potentially there can be a trade-off. If you take the wetlands there, you create wetlands somewhere else or something, or.
Um, I don't have any other news. Does anyone have any other new other news?
This, I just wanted you all to be aware, for those of you who are able to swing by the library on Wednesday, this is our, uh, community planner from Central Vermont Regional Planning, Nikki Sabato, and I thought it was interesting the way it was termed. It, it says future land use regional plan map and housing survey tabling discussions. And she's done it in all the different towns in in our particular region, and I think it's.
She's just getting people to take a survey?
Uh, that's part of it. That's part of it, but it's also to have a conversation for those people, maybe not you guys, but if you have questions about planning and land development.
Yeah.
Whether it be here in Warren, but just even for the region.
Jim, did Jim, or you, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so making, the survey's also online, so if you, if you can't make them.
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious, like, if this person's actually a planner, that's also really cool, like.
Yeah, exactly.
She's the one who's gonna help us with our town plan, right?
Yes, she will be. If, if we get the grant, she's the one. Uh, she's the one that helped us get the application done. She was, as I said, it was like a village getting that done, but it all worked.
Which, which reminds me that, um, at, at the M R V P day.
Yeah.
Christian Myers from C V R P C came.
I know the name, but I don't know him.
So he, he replaced, um, what was her name? Rock, Claire Rock.
Oh, Claire.
It was fantastic, Claire was fantastic. Kristen's also very good, but he's sitting in Claire Rock's position as the sort of the C V R P C rep to the M R V P date. Um, and partially related to Megan's question, historically, the state will decide how many housing units, or maybe it was C V R P C, would say, like, we need more housing. And they would like randomly allocate how, with no money. They would just say, we're gonna see three hundred, we want to see a hundred new housing units in Warren.
Yeah.
We want to see two hundred housing units in, you know, wherever. But they don't provide any funding, and it's sort of, um.
Yeah, it's a goal we're supposed to have. It's a goal that we have to incorporate, that's, that Central Vermont says that, yeah, Warren has to do eighty-seven new built, you know.
Well, the state, the state is taking an even bigger role and is really enlisting the central or the regional planning commissions in doing a deeper dive, it sounds like, this year. But I still think, at the end of the day, the process is they're gonna come up with a number of housing units, maybe eighty that should go in Warren, and we'll have to decide, we'll, we'll have to kind of tell them where we'd like them. We, we may.
Could they be ones that are in process now, or are they gonna, I mean?
I think we're supposed to, maybe it's part of identifying.
New, new ones?
Areas where housing will go. Unfortunately, it still remains unfunded. So I'm not sure what the.
I don't know what they expect us to do.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the exercise is, but at least it's identifying areas where, you know what it is, it's identify where, planning commission, think about areas where housing can go and make sure your zoning fits with that.
Which ours does.
But.
Especially the new one.
Well, they're gonna make us go through that exercise again, and I think there's still, unfortunately, will be no funding to help the town really do anything. But.
So.
Go ahead, Jim, yes.
Yeah, so to that point, there's this, this tiered level land use planning that they're starting to kick around.
Yeah.
Control Vermont Regional Plan, and it's something that we're gonna at least have to become conversant in and then pick what we want to be. I don't understand it well enough to bring it back to you folks yet. I'm gonna spend a little bit of time on it over the next couple of weeks. And then y- you let me know how you want it to come into the planning commission. You want me to invite somebody, or you want me to come in and tell you first?
Well, Christian Meyer, you know, you've reminded me, Jim, so what, to Jim's point, whatever that big legislation was that's connected to Act two fifty.
Yeah.
You have like tier, you know, where big, tier one.
Tier one A, tier one B, tier two, tier three.
Right, for the level of development and how much Act two fifty is gonna play a role there. And it's connected to how good your municipal government, municipal plan will never be, you know, cities will be like the tier one, will never be like, we don't.
Right, because we just don't have the space for it.
We don't, we don't have the.
What it does is it allows a whole lot more units in areas.
Yeah.
But we don't have the budget to have the experts on. But we don't have the budget to have the experts on, on payroll either, right, that.
Christian Myers has offered to come at any time to talk to us and explain, I'm not really sure how this. Is gonna impact us, and he's, well, we have to make an election. At some point, I think we have to elect.
Exactly.
Here we're gonna be in. So Ruth, something to think about? Let us know when Christian Myers should come here.
Yes, I will, and I'm, I'm, I've heard, I've heard the spiel on this once, just once, I guess. So I have a, but I've also read about it some too, um. Part of, this is why we are going to get the neighborhood thing, which will not happen until September. I'm talking to Joshua, that we want the neighborhood designation, because that comes into play as to what they're doing at the regional level.
Uh, yeah, I think they're actually terminating that, but we'll be grandfathered in or something, and.
Uh, no, I, well, they, they may be changing it some, but, but you need to have it in place. Because it will still be helpful to you, even if they're not doing any new ones. I think something along those lines.
Something along those lines.
Yeah.
Um, but let's get Christian Myers to come in and explains, because we're gonna have to, I think the Planning Commission will wanna advise the Select Board. We think we should elect tier two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A, because.
We have to think what makes sense based on, on our land use regulations and what we've got here and what we think that, you know, it's gonna happen and that kind of thing.
And our municipal capacity.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, thank you, Jim, that's right.
Two, and two other things there. How do you want updates from the. Transportation Advisory Committee and the Energy Committee to come into this meeting? You wanna just make it an agenda item once a quarter? I'll give you updates.
I think once a quarter minimum, but if you have news you wanna share, like, I think the Mad River Bus is not, um. Is losing some funding, I've heard, and we've had to change the route a little bit.
Yeah, they're gonna change bus companies or trying to change bus companies.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, you, I, I'll, uh, I'll put something together, and then I'll make sure I just have it, and if, if you guys wanna hit it. At whatever meeting we have time.
Once a quarter, but I mean, I'm happy if we get it once a month, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we have two meetings a month, if we have at least once a month, one of our meetings. So otherwise, you'd be accumulating a whole lot of stuff potentially, so. Okay.
Yeah, okay, and I'll try to send out a written summary before I come into the meeting, so you. Folks don't, aren't ambushed by it just in the meeting. Okay.
I'll feel pretty ambitious, too. Thank you very much.
No, that, that doesn't.
If you wanna, if you wanna get it to me, like, by Thursday before the meeting, I can always include it along with the agenda that I sent out to you guys on Friday. And sometimes I get it out early and get it to you on Thursdays.
Okay, I'll do that. It just, it might make it easier to.
Yeah, I can do that, because that's, I can put that with the agenda in the, um, in the minutes that I send out.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Jim. Um, okay, so that concludes no other business I enter. If no one has any other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Your motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second.
All in favor, uh, the meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-seven. Thank you all. Thank you, Carol, thank you, Ruth.